Good evening and welcome to tonight's city council meeting. Today is Tuesday, July the 5th, 2022. The time is now 6:00 P.M. The regular meeting of the city council of the city of Trinidad will now come to order. Would you please rise for the present ladies? Ms. Garrett, would you please lead us, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the roll, please.
DeBono.
Here.
Criego.
Here.
Ogletree.
Here.
Shu.
Here.
Thurman.
Here.
Williamson.
Here.
Rico.
Here.
Item two, approval of the agenda. Any changes the council wants to make? And now entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Call a vote?
DeBono.
Yes.
Criego.
Yes.
Ogletree.
Yes.
Shu.
Yes.
Thurman.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Rico.
Yes.
Item three, policy item and staff reports. Ms. Garrett, do you have anything to report?
None this evening. Mayor, city attorney Downs and I will talk to city council later on in the meeting concerning the fireworks show, however.
Okay, thank you. Item four, petitions or communications are overwritten. Do you have anybody signed up? Mr. Lackey?
Yes. How's everybody doing this evening?
Good.
Everybody survived the fireworks last night?
Mm-hmm.
Of all sorts. Happy Fourth and let's hope the rest of the month is uneventful. I'd like to talk a couple of subjects tonight. One of them is our river cleanup process and some of our projects that we've got going on the river that you all should, I hope, would be interested in. We had thirty participants on Saturday, cleaned major portions of the river. It had no real issues. I'm sorry, I didn't see the council people there, but summer's not over yet. First Saturday of every month. The other thing we're doing is putting together a program that is including the Purgatory Watership Partnership, the irrigators, and several others. And we're, I don't know if you've been down to see what we've been doing at the river there behind Club Fourteen. The island's gone. We got the new diversion point. And we're getting ready to start working on the dam itself. We've led a bid for engineering for both passage and fish passage. So that's going to be a major process for the river, which will put the river in good stead for other grants that we can go after to improve the habitat and everything else down along the river. So I would like to ask the city council, somebody to volunteer to visit with us when we go through these programs, because what we really need is participation from the city, because the city actually is responsible for the river bed. And that's been ignored, let's just put it that way, for a number of years. And we really need to get busy, get the city involved, start getting some of the areas cleaned up. I know the city's got a piece of equipment that we could use and to help that very much. So if one of you ladies or gentlemen would love to learn about fish and bugs and all that kind of stuff and what the water's doing and who owns the water and how it's being allocated and what the future of Trinidad can be with that water system that starts in the Calabasas and goes all the way to the Arkansas, we would love to have you. So we're going to have several meetings and putting together the programs that we're going to put together, plus recreational opportunities, recreational thought processes. And we have our budget in place. We've got almost two million dollars that we're doing all this work. So it doesn't cost anything. We might even buy lunch, who knows? So I'll put that out there. Whoever would like to join us, please let us know. And the other thing is too, we had a discussion last week about this, and I'm sure everybody's tired of talking about this, but our patio, our tourism, and some aspects that I think I need to clean up tonight, because there was this perception that there's outstanding litigation or potential litigation out there. And I just want everybody to know, none of that's coming from us. We had disagreements earlier, and Mr. Downs is very aware of those, but there is no potential litigation. So I'm hoping the city's not using that as an excuse not to do something, because we got taken total advantage of by a convict, Mr. Hamer, and he put the city in bad strings. But I don't want that, you know, whenever we make big mistakes, you learn from the mistakes that don't kill you and you move yourself forward. So I'm hoping the city will take a look at that and say, look, we screwed up, but we'd like to get this thing going. Let's get back to where we used to be when Trinidad used to be a town that determined its own future, not waiting for somebody else to determine it. That's a key factor. I would hate to see us become the Las Vegas of Colorado, Las Vegas, New Mexico. And it's a situation that I think is crucial for the city. You all are thinking individuals. We've got a major crossroads getting ready to happen in Trinidad, and it's, part of it's already hit us, so we need to make sure they're ready for the rest of it. But I would love to see us get back to determining our own future, not letting somebody else do it for us. Any questions? You know where Moose's is? Free therapy along with your beer or water cocktails, so come back soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Scott, teach us.
We're at six months now. Just wonder, today, reviewing through all my notes, why are we here? Why do I still not have the liquor license that you all approved? I pick up on my notes on November 3rd. Audrey Garrett, city clerk, sends me an email stating we must follow some definition of the restaurant. Cut and pasted it, never fully provided the regulation. I responded to that. My attorney asked the city attorney for the same. After reviewing the CRS Title 44 dated 2020, the section was not applicable. So, I don't know, I guess that was just an obstacle or something that was thrown out there. Why is the legal portion of this coming from the city clerk and not the city attorney? I don't know. From that date was the December 7th meeting where there was a big discussion about the liquor controls and the boundaries. And then mysteriously somehow that all got solved, yet I had not put the boundary in place. January 4th, the license was approved, recommended by the state, approved by the council that was sitting at the time. On March 6th, my attorney got a copy of the approval letter. Why it took from January 4th to March 6th, two months to get that? I don't know, maybe it's just a small thing, just keep moving on. So we tried to. He sent an email asking the city attorney whether liquor sales can be from a concession trailer. Apparently, the city clerk and the city attorney both questioned that. We already received an answer from the state of Colorado Department of Revenue, and we found nothing in any city document that precluded that. We had a county health inspection completed. We had asked, let me see here, in another, or a subsequent email, the city clerk pointed out that we needed a fire and building department inspection. Well, we had asked for, at that time, March 11th, we had the boundary in place and we had asked for an inspection. We never got it. My counselor sends an email stating, please advise if the city has any specific objections and their basis, presumably from the non-lawyer. I'm saying, what's the regulation supporting that? We didn't get that. Nothing has been submitted to myself or my attorney. So he showed up here to city council. My partner Allison Shoemaker showed up, and I was here pointing this out. And of course, for about four months now, it's probably done nothing but go downhill. I'd like to point out that ninety days comes up on the 27th of July. That's the ninety day timeframe for the CGIA that we, that I provided to the city council. Now, where have we submitted paper for a lawsuit? One minute. There's still plenty of opportunity to sort this out. I've got pages of documents. I don't think there's anybody in the city that should be treated the way I have done. You can't quote me the rule and the regulation for the boundary. You can't quote the correct rule and the right regulation for my hotel and restaurant license. And by the way, that was asked by the city clerk back in April of 2021, that I intended to submit for a hotel and restaurant license. March 1st, I got a letter from the state regarding the concession trailer. It's not a factor. I've since asked information about the ADA requirements and also who has the authority to create obstacles. Is it the state? Is it the city? Or is it the Department of Justice that looks over the ADA requirements?
Let's tell it.
Thank you.
Ms. Lopez?
Hello, Mayor and City Council. Last week, so many citizens of Trinidad put their homes and businesses onto the no spray list that it became impossible for the city to spray for mosquitoes. Two years ago, I first contacted city council with my concerns with the abatement program. I've since continued to push for education on the subject. I met with a former city manager of Public Works and former Public Works Director for the fellow citizen of concern, Jennifer Latik. We gave them packets of information on how other front-range cities manage their abatement programs without spraying poisonous pesticides. Although I'm thrilled that Aquarlore 2020 will not be sprayed on our community this year due to the public outcry of its harmful effects, I recognize the city council needs to reevaluate and create a new policy. Since Mr. DeBono, Mr. Williamson, and Miss Ogletree voted to change this policy previously, I believe that the other four of you could make this change. I urge Mr. Rico, Ms. Criego, and Mr. Shu, and Mr. Thurman to work with your counterparts to make this change. It is clear that the citizens do not want a spray-only policy. The policy change I have been advocating for for two years focuses on personal protection. I would like Trinidad to adopt a change of increasing public awareness by having a tab on the city website about the abatement program. The public education is cornerstone to prevent West Island Zika exposures. Almost all the other cities in Colorado have this information on their websites. I want to continue to advocate for mosquito control by using BTI dunks to target mosquito larvae and not our environment. I want to increase swallow and bat nesting sites near the river and Central Park area to naturally reduce mosquito population. This was trialed in Greeley, Colorado with success. Lastly, the June 15th, 2021 meeting, the council was informed that the city already has the capability to trap and test mosquitoes carrying diseases. Please resume the trapping mosquitoes and testing them. Denver has five trapping sites for the whole city. I'm sure one would be fine for Trinidad. Let's be clear, I've always agreed to spray for mosquitoes if the data is showing an acute West Island outbreak. Please use me or my partner Jennifer Latik as a resource on this topic. We are both registered nurses who are educated in this matter. We have always wanted to help make the mosquito abatement program better, safer, and more ecologically conscious. And I have a whole bunch of stuff in the back saying once again what ETI is, and then some information from other websites, from other cities, and all those good things, just like these screenshots of all these different mosquito abatement pages. A lot of places don't spray at all, and I think that Trinidad could easily do that. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Thank you. On to item five, consent agenda approval. Five A, approval of the regular meeting minutes of June the 21st, 2022. Item B, designation with Fire Chief David A. Backrack, junior, as the member representative for the Colorado Firefighter Heart and Cancer Benefit Trust. And item C, approval of bills for an amount of $1,398,809.61. Item D is approval of payroll, June the 25th, 2022 through July 8th, 2022, in the amount of $451,123.73. Entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Call a vote, please.
DeBono.
Yes.
Criego.
Yes.
Ogletree.
Yes.
Shu.
Yes.
Thurman.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Rico.
Yes.
Item six, public hearings. Six A, public hearing for consideration of ordinance amending the zone classification of property located in the Beshores Inside Edition, also known as the hospital subdivision to the city of Trinidad, Colorado, for low-density residential and community commercial zoning to neighborhood services and communities, community commercial zoning. Hearing is now open. Ms. Garrett?
Mayor and City Council, this request to change the zoning classification of property is in conjunction with the final plat and the vacate being considered under item six. The final plat was approved last meeting. This is concerning basically the hospital campus and also includes the Health Department property. Approval of the zoning is appropriate as it does meet the required criteria. It meets the criteria for rezoning, that the area is changing to the degree rezoning is required, and also rezoning is in line with the comprehensive plan and public interest has been met. It's staff's recommendation and planning commission's recommendation that approval is given for this zone change.
Okay. City council has any questions? Mr. DeBono, any questions?
I don't, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
I have no questions.
Any questions?
No questions.
No question. I don't have any questions. Like I said, I know we've, we had a little discussion on this earlier on. Anyone in the audience or listening in tonight want to speak for or against the consideration of the ordinance amendment? Hearing none. Hearing is now closed. Six A, one, second reading of an ordinance amending the zone classification. A property located in the Beshores Inside Edition, also known as the hospital subdivision to the city of Trinidad, Colorado, for low-density residential and community commercial zoning to neighborhood services and community commercial zoning. Entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, call a vote?
DeBono.
Yes.
Criego.
Yes.
Ogletree.
Yes.
Shu.
Yes.
Thurman.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Rico.
Yes.
Item six B, public hearing for consideration of ordinance amending Chapter Seven, Finance and Taxation, Article Six, Economic Development Fund, to allow for the creation of affordable workforce, housing incentives, and to set forth allowable development incentives. Hearing is now open. Ms. Garrett?
Mayor and City Council, this item would set aside funds into the Economic Development Fund for the Housing Now program, a total of 1.5 million. There will be established incentive programs, three separate programs, that will be administered by city staff in conjunction with another party yet to be chosen. We have currently an add-out for a qualified entity or individual to assist with the administration of the incentive program. And I think it's going to be very helpful for those who are wanting to create workforce housing. It will certainly incentivize them the way the plans have been, the incentives have been set forward. So it's recommended also that this be approved, and Michael Uhrman is on the call this evening.
Michael, do you have any, any further information that you want to give us?
Well, the only thing I would add is the substance of the ordinance is to add in deed restriction workforce housing to the existing fund as an eligible expense. And then the other big, the other thing I was adding to the ordinance is that any expenditure or award from the incentive program over $50,000 would require approval through a funding agreement with the city council. So downtown, I believe we set a cap at 200,000, and the new, one project, new units are 150. So both of those, if any award were to exceed 50,000, that would come to the city council for approval for the ordinance.
Questions from council, Mr. DeBono?
No, sir.
No. How come you're not down here?
Good question.
Because I mean, good question, right?
I don't have any questions, but I do want to just again make sure that whoever we choose as the assistant with this will be able to help developers to leverage the money to get to grants that will really make a difference.
I have no questions.
I don't know who this question should be directed to. I just wanted to make sure that we're certain the mechanism is in place to enforce the deed going forward. If properties are exchanged, it will keep those properties available to workforce. Are we certain that's in place?
So that legal mechanism is a deed restriction, which would be recorded against the real property record. It would be part of a funding agreement that would, that would be presented to the city council. So it's going to be a case by case. Those deed restrictions tend to, what we would never do is create one that would be a standard one for any properties that the city would be just funding. But a majority of these properties would have an external lender such as Dula or Chaffa that had their own deed restrictions that we would consider. And again, I think it's a case by case, but it is recorded against the property at CO prior to the funding award, is how I'd suggest and how I've seen other communities handle that. So there would be a standard restrictive covenant or deed restriction for properties that are just one unit, like in the downtown, whereas a bigger project that is, for instance, leveraging grants, those come with their own deed restrictions. And I certainly would tell you that you're, the city would be well-founded to look at those deed restrictions coming out of the state lenders, because they're going to be a little bit more heavy-handed and have a little bit more power and authority behind them, because they'll be state or federal plans. Does that make sense?
It does, thank you.
May I ask a question?
Sure, go ahead.
I'm sorry. It just dawned on me, when you're talking about deed restrictions, is there any deed restriction in that paperwork that restricts these properties to go to a short-term rental?
That would be explicitly prohibited. That, that is the, probably the number one thing that would be prohibited in these conditions for any of these properties. There would need to be long-term rentals, which the next consultant can, can work with the city on defining in the code, which you want to update, which most communities, the statute is thirty days or more, or so thirty-one days, but I would encourage the city to be a little bit more heavy-handed on a long-term rental. But a short-term rental would be explicitly prohibited for any of these properties taking us.
Thank you.
Ms. Garrett, on these deed restrictions, of course, Mr. Downs, you might have to answer this as well, but these deed restrictions, the mechanism to come forward to council, that be in the form of an ordinance or will it be in what other form? Because I hope that we don't have something that will slow down the process that's going to take longer time. That's the thing my concern is. So what would be the mechanism to be able to go through a deed restriction?
It'll be in the development agreement, the agreement with these folks, correct? We shouldn't have to pass an ordinance.
Okay.
By charter, we wouldn't be required.
So just come forward to that. The other thing I just want to mention is, you know, the word is out on this already, and I've had, I've had someone call me this morning, they're interested in it, and I called Ms. Garrett, and she said, of course, we're going to codify this tonight possibly. And I, I said that when this does happen, that they can get hold of, I think she mentioned that Wally would be the person that would be working with whoever. So the word is out, and there's some interest in it, so. Anyone wanting to speak for or against either in the audience or listening in virtually? Hearing none. Hearing is now closed. Six B, one, second reading of an ordinance amending Chapter Seven, Finance and Taxation, Article Six, Economic Development Fund, to allow for the creation of affordable workforce housing incentives and to set forth allowable development incentives. Entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Any further discussion? None? The incentive awards over $50,000. How will that come forward to us if there was a request over that? Would that be in the form of an ordinance or would that be? No?
No, it shouldn't have to be. Again, it would be the agreement that would be approved, correct? That would be what will be in front of council for consideration. Is that right?
It would be, it would be a funding agreement, because it's a budget expenditure, I would have to talk to your legal counsel about how you would approve that, but typically contracts are just approved by motion.
I just want some clarification, we might have to discuss that a little bit more, so. Call a vote, please.
DeBono.
Yes.
Criego.
Yes.
Ogletree.
Yes.
Shu.
Yes.
Thurman.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Rico.
Yes.
Item six C, public hearing for consideration of ordinance vacation, vacating a portion of Bonaventure Avenue and portions of alley's rights of way in the Beshore, Beshores Inside Edition to the city of Trinidad, Los Angeles County. Hearing is now open. I think Ms. Hallow had that, but I don't see her.
I'm going in for these items this evening. Mayor, again, this, mayor and city council, this is in conjunction with the hospital's overall hospital subdivision. This will vacate four portions of right-of-way that traverse through the property currently and are undeveloped, unnecessary, and so it's city council, city council, city staff's recommendation that it be vacated, the property be vacated.
Okay. Any questions from council? Mr. DeBono?
Why are we vacating?
Because these are properties, if you look at Exhibit B, you'll see that these are rights of way that are either alleyways or undeveloped roadways that are, that exist throughout the property and they're unnecessary to the city. They wouldn't be, they wouldn't be properties that would be developed in the future, and they are relatively necessary to the hospital and they're for their use, so.
So it's not going to benefit the city?
No.
I can't really see it, but, okay.
Ms. Criego?
No questions.
No, I don't have any.
No questions.
No questions. No questions. You know, I think that's, that's a piece of property that, you know, has been on my mind, not only, even before I was on city council, there was some discussion only about what to do with it, and it's time to do something different with it, so it's good to, see, we're moving in that direction, so. Anyone virtually or in the audience wants to speak for or against the consideration of the ordinance vacating? Hearing none. Hearing is now closed. Item C, one, second reading of an ordinance vacating a portion of Bonaventure Avenue and portions of alley's rights of way in the Beshores Inside Edition to the city of Trinidad, Los Angeles County, Colorado. Entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, call a vote?
DeBono.
Yes.
Criego.
Yes.
Ogletree.
Yes.
Shu.
Yes.
Thurman.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Rico.
Yes.
Item D, public hearing for consideration of ordinance amending parking regulations as it pertains to commercial vehicles. Hearing is now open. Ms. Garrett?
So the city attorney and I spoke about the school district's location with respect to their bus parking, because it is to their bus parking because it is part of the restriction. The property that the school district owns is zoned open and however where they're parking those buses is zoned low density, correct?
Right.
So one of two things, council can table if you would like or we can ask the school district to rezone the property because that obviously is going to be where they're parking their buses, the property to the, oh, I'm going to get messed up on directions, east, south, east.
I think east.
Is zoned neighborhood services, it's a hair salon, across the street is a commercial property, so it's, it's not outside of the possibilities to seek a zone change on that property to allow the buses to continue to park there. But the mayor certainly found a good point. It will affect them too, so.
So we have two options here is, one would be rezoning or the other one that was?
Or table.
Or table.
Table.
May I add?
Sure.
Please, thank you, mayor. I want to say, I tried to reach out to someone at the school administration and that's challenging to do in July. I mean, I'm sure there were a lot of people up there, but I just don't know how to get through it, but I've left a message for them to call. I just want to make you aware and try to make them aware that if the ordinance goes through on its effective date, then the buses being there now would cause them to be running afoul of our new ordinance. We kind of are, you know, Auntie and I, Ms. Garrett and I were talking that it should be easy for them to move the buses, like even, you know, anywhere to school property since school is not in session, but, you know, kind of hate for them to have to do that. Just want to make sure you're aware that if this does go through after 10 days, that they would be, you know, running afoul of this new ordinance. Does that make sense?
You know, in light of that, my recommendation to council, depends what council wants to do, would be to table it simply because it would give the school district time to decide what they want to do. So that would be my recommendation, I'm not sure if that's council, what their thoughts are. Mr. DeBon?
Last thing, if did run afoul, what kind of grace period would we give the school district?
Well, we would treat, there's really not, and we want to treat everybody equally, so, but of course we also don't want to be, you know, engaging in code enforcement against the school district. So, yeah, I mean, I do think 10 days is a long time, you know, in relative terms, but yeah, we don't want to be citing people in the municipal, you know, from there. Maybe we need to talk about it all like Mayor Rico said, table it.
They can rezon it, fine, if not, leave it up to them if they want to rezon it up to them. Give them the option, I think that would be the best. Ms. Garrett, I'm, where are you?
It was my understanding that that property where the beauty shop building is also belongs to the school district.
Correct.
Why can't they put, park those buses on the east side of that building instead of the west side? Would that?
I think that would be okay. I think that would be okay. I just, you know, kind of hate to.
I know.
Do anything without having, without having been able to reach them, but I think they could absolutely do that.
Absolutely, no.
And again, I think it won't be easy to do to get somebody, but I just kind of hate to do that. It is my understanding, and maybe some of you have heard of this, but I think the school district has always wanted to rezone that property. I don't know how I would know that, but.
Yeah, they did at one time, they wanted to build an athletic field there.
Okay. And maybe it was one of you who said something, but I.
Yeah, they never felt, I guess the money source, but they wanted to extend the minor skating out and build a football practice field there.
But it would be easy to park the buses on the other side.
There's not a number.
Yeah, and the residential comes up pretty quickly, so.
Well, in light of that information, let's say we table it.
Right. I table it from, I would agree with.
I have another question that kind of came up as I was looking through this. First of all, I, this is directed at commercial vehicles and I'm not sure whether or not school buses qualify as commercial vehicles in the first place. They might be something that we could either take out of the ordinance specifically or, you know, or say non-operational school buses or something like that. But the other thing that I thought as I was reading through this again is that we use the term that we're defining in section 2025-1 of commercial vehicle, we then use the term "commercial vehicle" throughout that to define it. And I think it might be better to define what is, what do we mean by "commercial" and then just say "vehicles" that are used in commercial activities because it doesn't make any sense to say a commercial vehicle shall mean any vehicle, blah, 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 or any single commercial vehicle. If you look at the first two lines, for instance, but then throughout that definition, we use the term "commercial vehicle" several times. So anyways, I think if the point of what we're trying to do is to keep commercial vehicle activity out of residential areas overnight, then I don't think of school buses as commercial activity. I think of that as a different kind of activity. So maybe we could rethink it along those lines and then it's not an issue for the school district.
Ms. Thurman?
Yeah, there's a gray area there, so we definitely should table that. We don't want to get hung up on making the school a target of commercialized vehicles. Let's table it.
In light of everyone's comments, I would agree on tabling that for this evening. Okay, entertain a motion to table item D until we can get some clarification on whether the school district wants to rezone, move the buses, and to clarify whether the buses qualify as a commercial vehicle or not.
I would make the motion to table item six D, public hearing for consideration of an ordinance amending parking regulation as it pertains to commercial vehicles to a future date.
Second?
I would second that, but I would also like to get some clarification, like Warren said on school buses.
Yeah, I don't have to, I said, to clarify whether it's commercial or not.
Yeah, that would be not just a table of motion, but to get some clarification.
Yeah, that's why I said we have to clarify on the complete thing.
I think we could just indicate privately-owned school buses, change that as part of the definition because we have had school buses that were operational parked in residential areas and causing horrible sight obstructions at one point. And so privately-owned school buses would address that issue.
Some of the drivers actually take the school buses home with them, some of the smaller ones. We need some real clarification. Sorry, I think we have a motion to table, need a second?
Second.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Call a vote, please. To table?
DeBono?
Yes.
Griege?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Schu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Before you move on to the next item, apparently Carlos Lopez had his hand raised to address council for the public hearing on the vacate ordinance for the hospital property. I know you closed the hearing, but I think, I think last year's trying in.
Mr. Downs, what do you recommend here as a legal standpoint? Is it okay or not?
Well, I think it's okay. I don't think it should be allowed to reverse the outcome, but I think it would be appropriate for you to, and with our apologies, we didn't see he had his hand up, but I think it would be okay to let him make his comments now.
Ms. Lopez, if you want to go ahead and make your comments, you're welcome to do so this night.
My question is more than a comment, was pertaining to how much revenue, whether will this vacation from tax dollars and other things, will this be affecting the City of Trinidad?
Ms. Garrett?
So the hospital is a not-for-profit, they're not paying tax dollars on their property, nor is the city paying tax dollars on the property that's being vacated, so there's not an implication in that way.
Okay, that was my question.
Thank you.
Okay, on to item E, public hearing for consideration of ordinance vacating a 60-foot strip of Jackson Street lying south of lots eight through 26, block nine and north of lots one through nine, block 11 of the James Addition to the City of Trinidad, Los Angeles County, Colorado. Hearing is now open. Do we have either Mr. Hudson on or Mr. McGregor listening in tonight?
I believe Mr. Hudson has been out of the country. Mr. Breedlove is in the audience, he would be the adjoining property on one side of, on the opposite side, and.
Mean that this is, how do you feel about this vacation?
I'm good with it. We're good with it.
Okay.
I mean, it doesn't benefit us, but if it'll benefit Dave Hudson and his project and the apartments, we're for it.
Was he having any questions from council? Mr. DeBon? No, no, I don't, Jamie.
No questions?
No. Pretty good.
I do not.
I have no questions. I have no questions. Well, I think the real answer here is that, you know, they're going to be building some apartments or housing units or something there, which is something that we desperately need.
Condos, I believe he said, sort of two-story condos that he'll rent out, is my understanding.
Extra houses.
Extra houses, which we need.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone in the audience wants to speak forward against or listening virtually? Hearing none. Public hearing is closed. Item E one, second reading of an ordinance vacating a 60-foot strip of Jackson Street lying south of lots eight through 26, block nine and north of lots one through nine, block 11 of the James Addition to the City of Trinidad, Los Angeles County, Colorado. Entertained a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion from council? Call a vote, please.
DeBono?
Yes.
Griege?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Schu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes.
Item seven unfinished business, we have none. Item eight, Ms. Lane's business. Item eight A, consideration of development, Greek development agreement with NV Incorporated. Entertained a motion?
So moved.
Second? Second. Mr. Breedlove, you might as well come back.
Could have just ate.
Anyway, I know you brought it to our attention, why don't you go ahead and say what your plans are?
Restaurant, entertainment facility, you know, some learning, training stuff, just more business for Trinidad. Trying to expand our businesses, we already own here in town, just trying to, you know, we love this community, it's our home and we just want to build it.
So have you questions, Mr. DeBon? No, thank you. Thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
No questions?
No.
My questions were answered last night.
No questions.
No questions from last night. Just want to say thank you for investing in the community and, absolutely, thank you very much.
Of course, thank you. From Thursday, I dropped it off downstairs.
Anything else from, Ms. Garrett, do you have anything?
No, just a reminder that the development agreement has a three-year timeframe and should the developer be unable to complete the project, then there would be payment due to the city for the property. Otherwise, this is a business incentive, it's literally a drainage area as it exists currently and it'll be a developed drainage area under Mr. Breedlove's ownership.
Now, Mr. Breedlove, you've read all the provisions within the development agreement?
I did.
Okay. Call a vote, please.
DeBono?
Yes.
Griege?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Schu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes.
Item eight B, resolution electing to direct Trinidad's allocation of opioid settlement funding to region 19 in an effort to realize the greatest benefit. Entertained a motion?
So moved.
Second? Second. Ms. Garrett?
As council will recall, Trinidad signed memorandum of understanding to participate in the distributor settlement involving the opioids litigation and as part of that, it was under the state's umbrella. So now it's time for the city to decide whether or not we will use those funds, accept those funds and choose how to distribute or use those funds under the guise of the memorandum of understanding or combine our funds into region 19, which is housed in Pueblo, Colorado, and then they would collectively use those funds. Trinidad would still see a benefit of the funds, it's just the idea is the combining of the funds will result in a better impact for all of the communities as opposed to accumulating these funds and have, you know, in a couple of years, we wouldn't have a whole lot. Probably best thing we might be able to do is some minimal education at most. And so the thought is just to improve the impact by combining the funds. That was the recommendation.
What was interesting about it is that we discussed this, is that that, over the period of time, there was some discussion of the dollar amount, and I think over an 18-year period, we're only going to get like $96,000, which is nothing. So what can we do with the few dollars we're going to get each year so hopefully that by joining, combining this money with region 19, that they'll be able to combine that with maybe other entities to make this much larger pool, maybe they could develop a different programs or maybe even build a facility to use that it's intended. So I think that that's the best, I think that's best. Anyway, get some questions, any thoughts from council, Mr. DeBon? No. No questions. Second?
No questions, it's just a very solid, good business decision to do that. I mean, it's not possible for us to try and attempt this one.
Yeah. I had a chance to talk with Marcy Key, who's the community prevention coordinator for Los Angeles and Blackmore County, and I just asked her if she had any concerns about what we were planning to do, and she had none. She was, she felt like the abatement council, who will be deciding how everything is allocated, is very aware of the needs down in this area and intends to address them, so she was very supportive of it.
Ms. Thurman?
No questions.
I don't think this would be a reason for considering to do this or not, I'm just interested. Do we know the disposition of other cities in our state?
I think the only person that would have some clue, but he's not listening in tonight, would be Felix Lopez, because he is the region 19 person that's representing us. So I think if we wanted to get that, he would probably have that information.
Yeah, I can, I can speak to him offline, certainly.
And the counties, most if not all of the counties in this area have decided to move their money to region 19, so.
Even Los Angeles County has done so?
And then Commissioner Lopez.
Mr. Luis Lopez, you're online, do you have any thoughts on this?
Thank you, mayor. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, the county feels the same way that what you reiterated earlier regarding the minimal amount of money coming forward over the tenure of this settlement. And Commissioner Felix Lopez is on the committee for the opioid settlement. However, I believe that we are in the same position as the rural communities in the state of joining our funds together collectively, moving forward for the most benefit for our communities. So I believe we did that decision recently and moving forward with that, and if the City of Trinidad moves forward doing the same thing, I think collectively as a region, I think it'll be for the betterment of the community. There's still some discussion and dialogue that needs to be finalized with the city and the county, Pueblo area moving forward, but at this time, I believe we are in the
of confidence in that plan, being that Commissioner Felix Lopez is on, I mean, they really do fight for our area here, so, you know, we can put our money there and rest assured that we'll get that return on investment. So I think it's a good idea.
Okay. There's no further discussion, call a vote, please.
DeBono?
Yes.
Griege?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes.
Item 8C, consideration of bid results for the 15KV breakers and switches installation project. That is an $89,500 amount to Mitsubishi, Mitsubishi Electric. Entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Garrett, I know that Mr. Valentine, when he was here, he kind of gave us a pretty good rundown on that. Do you have anything in addition to give us?
So, the council communication was pretty detailed regarding this whole project. This particular item, portion of the overall project, had a lesser budget, and that was what the engineer, his estimate was much lower than what our bid came in from Ward Electric. And so it enabled the city to have discussions with Ward Electric and try to negotiate a better price. And at the same time, we contacted Mitsubishi, who's the manufacturer, and to find out what they would charge the city for the installation. Either way, even after negotiating, the bid from Ward would have, it was just outside of the price line, we couldn't pay that for this leg of the project. And so the recommendation is that we move forward with Mitsubishi, and as you'll see, our city crews will be doing some of the work to cut back on costs as well. So we're trying really hard to keep this project within budget, and so far, so good. If this is approved and we move forward with Mitsubishi, it'll keep us on track, timing-wise as well.
I don't remember the exact amount, but the overall project was around $500,000, if I remember.
$540,000 was the overall opinion of probable costs by the engineer.
Mr. DeBono, any questions?
I did, but I don't.
Mr. McGregor?
No questions.
I have no questions.
I have no questions.
I was interested, do we know, I mean, I know that the engineering, engineer's estimate is just that, it's just an estimate, but do we know what the major contributing factors were for that being so off, was?
Let's see really quick. I don't recall if, I don't recall, I don't recall. I know our engineering firm that we retained did the negotiations on behalf of the city and certainly tried to get the price down. As you can see, though, it's overall about removal and installation, and I think part of it has to do with the traveling and...
And the price of $150 per hour, man-hours.
So I think that's largely what it is.
I think if you would just maybe get an answer for us.
I can email an answer.
I can do that. You know, there's Joe Coonsy, I guess, I was hoping that he'd be on tonight, but he's not, it looks like, so he might have some information. Any other questions, Mr.? No, ma'am. Okay. Couple of questions I had, of course, and one is, we know that, I guess, the funding is going to, for that, what came out of cultivation funds, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. The thing that I was wondering about is the concrete bid, I don't know what, how much concrete, what the estimate amount was on that for the concrete. If it's over $50,000, that's going to have to come in front of that, it shouldn't be more than that, I would think, so that could be something that, by your interim, you could probably improve, correct?
Yes.
And there was also something about drawings that were in there, have they been completed?
The drawings for the concrete pad?
I guess, the concrete pad and other items, I don't know, so that would be another question that maybe you can get for us.
We haven't received the revised drawings yet.
Okay.
It'll be part of it.
Okay. The biggest question on this, I guess, would be if there are any lead time problems with the, problems with the breakers or anything like this. I think if some comes up like that, please let us know.
Okay.
That would be, because we know that right now, so many products out there have longer lead times, and that would be a question that could really slow down, right? Because I think we're talking, I think, September on this project. The other thing that we need to do is to make sure that, to notify customers, consumers, that areas that it's going to get affected from blackouts, because Mr. Valentine had said that some of the power would be turned off for, I'm not sure, but how many hours or whatever while they do the reinstallation, so we need to make sure that we let the citizens know that this is happening.
Right.
Okay. There are no other questions, call a vote?
DeBono?
Yes.
Griege?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes.
Mayor Carlos Lopez has a sound-up again.
Mr. Lopez, what's your question?
It's more of a comment than anything. One of the things that we're learning at the national conference recently was that we have a lot of challenges with getting parts in communities in a timely manner. I just want to make sure that you all are aware of these challenges and are willing to anticipate things being not just weeks, but months late in order to get those switches. So I just want to make sure that that's on board with also the changes of prices, as well as any incurred labor changes for charges.
Yeah, I actually brought that particular item up, I think during the work session a while back, where I mentioned that I have read in one of the magazines that I get, that they're recommending to purchase some of the products that we're going to need in the next year, to try to purchase them now because of the long lead times that...
So there's a supply chain issue with...
There's a major supply chain issue on some products, so, yeah, there are.
Okay, I just want to make sure, because there's going to be lengthy time frames, so that way our power and life people are under no pretenses that something's going to happen in a hopeful, timely manner, but be just realistic.
All right, thank you very much. Item D, selection of city manager finalists for council, as well as people that are listening virtually and people that are in the audience. Before we move on, entertain a motion. And a second, we'll talk first, a motion, we are going to, as a finalist, a John Crete from Mono County, California, Steve Ruger from Rio Rancho, New Mexico, and a Rick Mestes from Sandia Park, New Mexico. And like I said, these are the selection of the city manager finalists. Entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Second.
Any discussion, Mr. DeBono?
No, sir.
Mr. McGregor?
No, sir.
Miss Garrett?
For our team.
No questions. No questions, ma'am.
Like I said, as we move through the process, they're actually going to be here for a two-day period, they're going to be talking to some staff. We're also talking about having a kind of meet these people, I'm not sure if that's going to be, probably Wednesday night?
Next week.
Wednesday night?
That's the point.
That'll be on the 13th?
Donal will be forwarding details concerning that.
For the public to be able to meet these finalists and ask the questions, if not, it'll be held.
I think, I'm not sure where, I'm going to consider it, but more than likely, I would say, but, yeah, she's working on it.
Call a vote, please.
DeBono?
Yes.
Griege?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes.
Item 9, council reports. Mr. DeBono?
I spoke with a couple of members of the Los Angeles County Veterans Council, and they were very impressed in how organized the parade was this past weekend. Were very good response from, from a lot of the townspeople. They were very impressed with the way it was put on and the amount of entries and...
The number of entries?
Yes. Very good.
That's good, yeah.
That's all I have.
A little three-year-old squirreled me. I felt...
Oh, you just stole my thunder, Eli. But I was gonna, you know, I've been going to the parade since its inception, and it's really grown considerably. It takes time for those events to mature to the level that it's, you know, it is, but I just wanted to thank everybody in the community. I was thinking, I was watching the parade, these people gave up their holiday to entertain the rest of us, and that's very, very good. I want to thank everybody. I know Chief Glorio so gave up his, part of his day too, but thank you so much, everybody.
I don't really have any comments, but I, what I'd like to do is, I know that Mike's gone, but we had a lot of projects going, can we get Danny and everybody in here to get an update on our projects at a work session here in the future? Because, you know, Mike's gone, I know you're, I'm sure you're well aware of some of those that, we just kind of wonder if they're all going to be set until we find a city manager, or we're going to go ahead and go forward on them? Because I think that's real important, we don't want to waste our time and get some of those projects done.
Probably do that, matter of fact, I sat with Mr. Valentine for probably about, in two different days, probably about four or five hours, going over all the various projects, but he brings up a good point, we can probably do that, so we can see where everything's with...
Yeah, they have good city staff, and they should know what's going on, pushing issues, good stuff going.
I haven't had any meetings, but I did have a few. I wanted to just put in a word for the Trinidad trigger, because they're having a very good season this year, and we have some excellent players, and I think they're actually on a winning season. So I'm hoping people will get out and go to see them. And then there's a gentleman named Dave Miller, who had long been involved in Trinidad, he owns a Savoy Hotel, and he calls me often to tell me different ideas that he has, and one of the ideas that he had for us, that I thought was a good one, is that city council have some presence at the farmer's orchid on Saturdays, just to be there and talk with people and identify themselves in the city council. So it's something that we might want to do. He said it has a very good impact in Steenbow, where he lives.
Okay, go ahead. Ms. Garrett?
Jen Green of R. Park and Rick is putting together a new master, updated master plan, and we should be getting it hopefully before the night's out.
Okay. Go ahead.
Unless you set a timer for 30 minutes, I'll appreciate it.
Yes, sir. You have three.
No, just kidding. I do not want this to be seen as a, I'll start with this, I thought the festivities this weekend, overall, I know we're going to speak about an issue, I thought the festivities overall this weekend were fantastic. But I wanted to say something that I'm really concerned about, and speaking to Councilwoman Griege's point, it takes a long time for events to mature, and I really do think the Fourth of July parade is achieving that. The water parade, though, I have a real concern with, and I think it'd be really, really easy to fix, but I think we do need to fix it. From my vantage point, I watched the whole water parade go by, I counted not less than three times, and I get this from when I worked at Pioneer and Evergreen, they drill safety into your mind. But I've watched three times of really near-miss accidents happen. One of them, a little girl was approaching the trailer to draw water from a trailer and was very nearly drawn under the trailer wheel. You'll probably recall, I think it was last year, they made national headlines, a child was run over by a float. Then the two other times involved people on wet decks of trailers, almost slipping and falling off. I don't know who the proper agency to put some sort of safety parameters around that would be, but it would be a terrible black mark on parade, on Trinidad, for someone to be really injured in that. And I think it's important enough that I'm using this time to bring it up.
Appreciate it.
I think, I really think that it's important. And I wouldn't want to see the fun of the parade ruined, but it should just happen safely. The other thing that I wanted to say concerns, I want to say two more things. One was the festivities at Central Park, fantastic time, my family, and I went there and really enjoyed that time. I don't know if any of you are there, able to see the watermelon contest, but I believe you were there, taking pictures, I think. No?
No.
Okay. It was someone else, I apologize. Anyway, it will make some paper, and it was highly entertaining. That being said, I did want to comment on some general concerns I had. The outdoor restrooms were available and opened, and they were pleasantly, I mean, no public restrooms are pleasant, ever, but they were clean and seemed to be kept clean throughout. I think that was great. But I don't know how many of you attended, but I did have a concern about the general condition of the stands. My thought is, it's, it is city property, and it's not as if the Fourth of July snuck up on us. At a minimum, I think that we could use a hose, a scrub brush, to clean down those stands. I mean, I have, you know, pictures worth a thousand words, and I have several pictures. There was literally hundreds of square feet of seating that was unavailable to be used because of the amount of bird droppings on it. I mean, and if you, I'm not exaggerating, a hundred square feet is 10 feet by 10 feet. So there's several of those. I think there were so many people from in-town and out-of-town taking part of that, I think we should really, really put our best foot forward. At a minimum, it wouldn't cost much to go in with a hose and a scrub brush and just wash the stands down. I think that would really help us, and that's even for ongoing games and referencing Councilwoman Ogletree. The last thing that I did want to say, you know, we're really in a period of change, and we all know that. Mr. Valentine is retired, and we're looking forward to hiring our new manager, but in the meantime, I really, really just wanted to ensure that the communication mechanisms in the city are still in place. I mean, I'm so thankful that Ms. Garrett has stepped forward and to do that, that's no small task, but we really need to ensure that you are getting lines of communication, the same respect and cooperation, and I have no expectation that isn't being met, but I just really want to ensure it is, because, I mean, we're at a critical point in Trinidad with everything new happening, and now we have this big change, so I just really want to ensure that, you know, communication and cooperation's happening. That's everything I had to say.
You know, you bring up a good point, and it's very unfortunate that, as mayor, you know, a lot of this communication, like I said, I mentioned to Frank, that the amount of time that I spent with Mr. Valentine in the last, before he left, that I'm not able to communicate directly to all of council, and that's by law, and that's what's the sad part, and, you know, Ms. Garrett is having to do double duty now, as a matter of fact, I had a meeting with her already and sat down, went over a few things, but I just wish that there was some way that I, unfortunately, the law says you can't do it, and it really puts her in predicament, because everything's got to go through her or someone else to be able to get it back to you, and it's, that's something that I just wish could get changed, but unfortunately, it is what it is. I wanted to bring up something, and this was brought up by Mr. Lopez earlier, when she brought up about the information about the mosquitoes and stuff, and we do have mosquito dunks that we are using around town, just to let you know. As a matter of fact, when I, Mr. Valentine, before he left, we talked about that, and there are certain areas that we know where, you know, there's standing water that they're throwing the mosquito dunks in. One thing that we, I know was brought to our attention, last year, we didn't look into it, was a more, you know, the mosquito repellent that we're spraying right now, that instead of using now, to look into something that's different. And I think, I talked to Mike, I think, before he left, did I talk to you? I had talked to Mike to check with Mr. Just if there was another product, I think Mr. DeBono gave me the product.
What'd you say?
And I'm not sure if Mr. Just was... And I'm not sure if Mr. Just was gonna look into that. Unfortunately, probably we bought our allocation this year for the mosquito control product that we're using, but maybe for next year. But yeah, we are trying to do something, we realize that there are some issues out there, really is. Week before last, on, I did a proclamation to the Lalo massacre thing that they hold every year. It was very well-meant today, it was, had a rainy day, a little cool, but there were still probably at least a hundred people there. Wanted to thank Ms. Garrett for, you know, putting together this proclamation, it was wonderfully, she does a wonderful job on the proclamations, I mean, it's amazing what she does.
Thank you, Richard.
And like I said, I met with Mike on our last 101 before he left and that's been a lot of time. Also did an interview with a lady from, I think it was Oklahoma State University. She wanted to know, I, I talked with her back in 2018, I believe, at the time and they were concerned about the drought conditions in Trinidad, what my views were on it and also other things that were going on in Trinidad. So we kind of talked about everything Fisher's paid, you know, all this other stuff that's going on. But the big thing was, she wanted to know what the drought was doing to the area and I said, well, we've been fortunate, we're getting some rain now, so we're working on it. Also Senator Hikalupur was in town. Several people were, we invited, were there. The biggest thing, there was several questions that were asked. Big problem is, is we only had about forty-five minutes to talk, because the first fifteen minutes he wanted to tour the space grid project because that was his baby when it started. So they took about fifteen minutes of that time and then we had about forty-five minutes, so Ogletree, you were there. And then after that, they wanted, he wanted to go down to the new mural that's behind the Waterworks building and he signed it and, you know, he talked to each of the kids and, but that was kind of nice. But the only problem was, like I said, is that the time, the amount of time that the people that were there to ask questions, as a matter of fact, Mr. Joy from your company was there. And asked a very solid question to him, which was, all right, that's okay. Also had a follow-up question with Antonio Huerta, which is Mr. Hikalupur's person represented in the area. Talked to him today and wanted to know what they look like in the community. I talked to some people afterwards and pretty well received, the way things went. Before I go on, I just want to mention something, you know, I'll be honest with you people. With what happened last night, I am pretty, you know what, it's disgusting. You know, we as a community, city council, we always get hit in saying you're not providing stuff with the community to do. And here we provide something for the community and it takes one person to screw it up. It's, it's very, I mean, I was upset, very, very upset last night. I talked to Chief last night when I heard about this. And it's just been irritating to me that one person could really mess up in almost an entire weekend, especially the day. When, you know, families are enjoying themselves. I know a lady who was, there were people that were trying to run through the fence, they were cutting the fence to get through, she threw a ladder over the fence so they could climb over. Women with their children were trying to get through the fence. I mean, things like this just cause chaos and it's really, really sad that one person is, can do that. I just want, there are some issues, I have a little problem with that. Unfortunately, we live in a time where people are angry. And if they want to change a position, have something, stay level, whatever, rather than do what they did last night, the best thing that they can do is get out and vote. Vote. Encourage other people to vote, that's the way that they make a statement, not the way it was done last night. A couple of weeks ago, I attended the Action 22 era meeting and during that meeting, we took up a position. I'm not sure if anybody here knows what the Air Commission was. The Air Commission was, is, everybody's heard about the, they were trying to close down the, some of these outline VA centers. That's what that was all about. So we took a position on that, that we were not okay with it. And of course, we sent it in as a group and as a matter of fact, when Senator Hikalupur was here, right before the meeting, we found out that the Air Commission, they shut them down. They said, no, we're not gonna do this. So those VA medical centers are going to stay open at that point. Yeah.
Oh, that's great.
So.
Yeah, that was good.
Like I said, we had our forum a couple of weeks ago, I was hoping that would have been attended a bit more. We had about twenty people here, there, people that attended, asked questions, they were very, I mean, asked some good, good questions and some of you that were there, I answered. And, but I think it went well, I wish we could have more people there, but unfortunately they more did not go. Also, I mentioned last time that Dr. Epper from, and she's part of Rotary Club, they want to try to do something with, kind of dressing up Colorado Avenue. And they're willing to put in some manpower as well as probably some money to do this. So before, did I talk to you about that? Can I remember if I talked to you or Mr. Valentine? And I think Mr. Just, Mr. Just and Mr. Miss Wolf will be the point people and she'll be the point person from Rotary and she'll have, if they've got several people, they're gonna get involved with this as well.
Is that pretty much addressing the islands on Colorado?
Yes, one of the questions, one of the things that they, when I, the first conversation I had with her is maybe what we could do is take one of the islands, kind of leave it grassy. The next island, maybe what we could do is they're escaping and kind of alternate them, so we could save one water as well as, you know. But it's gonna, it's gonna take a couple of years probably to do it all, but at least it's a starting point. The last question I had is, this came up and I know it was not in the, in the bid, and some questions have come up. And Ms. Garrett, maybe we could find out, there are two or three power poles, those power poles on Santa Fe Trail that were in question. What would it, how much would it cost to move those over to the side instead of right in the middle of the power, of the sidewalk? Not, I really can't see, they're, they're dangerous, people riding bikes or whatever, but if we can find out what that cost would be.
I will.
Would be great. That's all I have, do you have anything, Ms. Garrett?
No, I think, I think we should discuss Central Park, what happened and where we can improve. Unfortunately, people learn, people learn after the fact. You know, you try to prepare, you hope that everything is fine, but there's no such thing as small-town America anymore because everyone is touched by issues. And even though this one wasn't as tragic as a lot of them are, I think the people who experienced it had the same fears as those who are touched by really significant events involving weapons and what have you. Those people had those same fears. So obviously, staff is going to regroup and look at our processes, look, we'll, we'll discuss where we could improve safety for everyone. No one anticipates this sort of thing exactly, we all have had some, some training. But I think until things like this happen, you can't anticipate what, what, how people are going to react. So.
You know, we have Chief Glorio, so do you have any comments you'd like to make concerning it, anything?
So, you know, it is tragedy that that happened, we're lucky to the extent that no one was seriously injured. We'll let due process take its course. The fortunate thing was the chemical spray she used affected her as well, so she wasn't able to do more damage. So, you know, with this kind of event, we just have to take more precautions and do what we can to make it safe for the public.
Well, thank you for responding as quickly as you guys did, so. And I guess you said that some of the people that were there helped apprehend the lady?
Right, well, she, she pretty much took herself out. I watched a lot of body cam today and the spray, once there's any kind of little breeze, it just, it travels and affects a lot of people, I don't know if anybody's ever experienced. And this is bear spray, which is stronger than the normal spray even that we use, so.
Maybe, thank you.
Well, I, I don't have anything other than, I would like to say, I know Mike has not been gone long, but how great is this one? I'll say clerk and everything and, anyway, but I, I just wanted to, to comment on that and how fortunate we all are to have this rock of chabro. If you will excuse my bad metaphor.
So, I want to say two more things about the Central Park and...
Oh, sorry.
The events and Central Park.
She's deflecting, but go ahead.
Well, the city is very fortunate that we had a lot of employees come forward and help from start to finish with the event. We had public works, employees and fire personnel trained in setting off the fireworks, so they were there to help. Obviously, our police department was all over town. I, I don't know what people don't get about a fireworks ban, I don't, I'll never understand that. I think until they're personally affected by a loss of their own property or an injury, they don't get it. But I know that the police department couldn't have, they couldn't possibly keep up with what was going on. But they should all be thanked. I, I know the ambulance service was in there, you know, they were there, they assisted, fire personnel assisted, members of the public assisted. They, you know, they definitely tried to do what they could to assist with what was going on, terribly unfortunate. The other thing I want you to know is that I have a call into the district attorney's office, I'm expecting a return phone call tomorrow. I certainly hope that they will prosecute this individual and the city will be asking for restitution. We had our, all of the fireworks from the finale that had to go back with the vendor because obviously we don't have a facility to store them. So there's a value associated with that, that we'll definitely seek restitution for and their victims, the advocate person will be in contact with the people who were victims of this incident to also seek restitution on their behalf. So I hope that at the end of the day, this person is, is affected at least some. Because she certainly did affect a lot of people in a horrible way, especially kids that will never, never be the same. I mean, they were hearing the words active shooter and them and their families were scared, so it'll never be the same for them.
Could you please tell the police department and rest of your officers, thank you for everything they did and Audra, if you take, send a memo out from council?
I sure will.
Thanking them for everything that they've done.
Yes.
And, you know, even the newspapers here, if they want to put something saying that, thank any of the citizens of the community and volunteers that participated, thank them, that'd be good. Go ahead, continue.
Well, thank you, Mayor and Council, I just want to say that we will, insofar as we are financially affected by this, we will ask the DA's office to consider us as one of the actual victims of the crime. I mean, we weren't injured, we're not a person, but financially we were. And we will ask for our feedback in terms of any eventual offer or resolution that may be sought regarding a plea bargain in this case. And I, I don't know if you saw the press release that was sent out by the police department this morning about a quarter to ten. But it also gives a lot more detail on charges and, pardon me? Oh, okay, okay. But the, the charges that are being contemplated and things of that nature, so. Any questions?
Victims still come forward that were affected by the...
Yes, and there were quite a few who had to go to the, the hospital last night.
I know, I know multiple people that I've talked to at work today that were actually receiving the spray to the face. It's very strong, like I said, there was a slight breeze last night on top of everything else. You know, I, I guess the only advice that I would give public is, there, there are people that are just gonna go just to do that. And maybe confronting them is not the right issue, wait for us, call and wait for us. I know they were called a call last night, in fact, I got the mayor's call before I could actually pull it up on my phone to see what was going on, because they were just going, bouncing around side to side. But, I mean, when you, when you confront anybody, that's what they're, they're trying to do, they're trying to provoke someone to do exactly that. Whereas a law enforcement officer, we have a little better training maybe to have, go over and told her, hey, look, I know she was gonna use her first amendment rights and everything like that, but maybe we could have de-escalated it before it had got to that. I don't know. Public access to, I mean, I hold my breath for Blues Fest because there's so many access points, there's a lot of access points at Central Park. It's a tough job when we put it in an open venue like that to control what comes in and out. So I, I would just, you know, reiterate that confronting someone is going to probably bring out some kind of altercation, so call us. Call us and, you know, we'll do our darndest to get there as quickly as we can to handle whatever situation's going on. But public to public is just gonna escalate into something like it did last night.
Charlie, you know as well as I do, there's a lot of people that attend sporting events, any events intoxicated. Is there some type of, maybe Audra can answer this, some liquor code that maybe hourly, how long does a beer garden have to stay open? I mean, you know how sporting events have a curfew at the end of the seventh inning or the end of the third quarter, that there's no more beer sales? Because alcohol's pretty much the culprit for everything, isn't it?
Well, intoxication...
And mental instability as well.
Well, intoxication does always amp up whatever the problem is, so, you know, I would agree with that, but...
Was there any alcohol, anything like that, that you know that was involved with this one?
Yes. And that venue is really easy to, right, to get alcohol in and, and I think that would be kind of a policy to discussion for...
Do we need a beer garden to be open from sunup to sundown? I don't know.
May I make a suggestion? I don't know, this is by experience, you know, our little, small, innocent town, there's no such thing in this day and age anymore, we're all susceptible. But what I've noticed in the bigger sporting venues, they don't allow anybody to have backpacks come in. They put somebody there and if you bring like a purse, it has to be clear or in a clear plastic bag.
Well, but that's great, the access points, but there, there's all around that park where you can throw stuff over the gate. I mean, if you, hell bent on getting something in, in that venue, you're gonna get it in that first year. It, it's just, it's hard to control a big public space like that. The sporting events, you know, they do have a little in-and-out points where they can control a lot better, but when we're open like that or down in the district downtown, that's a lot of, a lot of area to cover. And to properly do it, it's, it's a challenge.
Chief, I wanted to say, and I called you immediately when I heard about this and you and I connected a few times, I want to say thank you for keeping me in the loop, once you found out some of the details, I want to thank you for that. Anything else? Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second? Take, call vote?
DeBono?
Yes.
Grealio?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?